I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, to order and ask Clerk Simmsky to roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Attorney Zimeneck?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone, and the next item on the agenda is our open forum. Just want to double check, is there anybody else here who wants to talk about an item that's not on the agenda? If not, I do have three requests that--shuffled them around, so... First one is from James Manuzak, from four seventeen Trace Court, and if you want to come up to the podium and explain to us your question or request.
I moved here three years ago in October, and I got a slob that lives next door to me, to the east. The guy never cuts his grass. The woman next to him, who's a retired Navy woman for forty years, winds up cutting his front grass. He waits till his back grass gets this high. Then he gets a riding mower, rides it and shoots the grass through the shadow box fence that he installed improperly, through everybody on each side of him, throws all the grass on their property. He owns five vehicles. Four of them sit in the driveway, blocking this crosswalk. One's a two-fifty ton, or a two-fifty Ford pickup truck, quad cab diesel. He starts it up, lets it run. Diesel goes through your house like if you're sitting behind a school bus. He never shovels his snow. He had a work Savannah GMC van that he was using. He's a pipe insulator. He used this thing for about a year or so, then around Christmas time, I seen that his van would never left the driveway, and I thought he wasn't working because things were slow. I asked him in April, I says, "Did you lose your job or what?" He says, "No, I'm getting jobs." I says, "How come your van's there?" Find out that there's an ordinance against blocking the sidewalk, so I started calling about him blocking the sidewalk. Now he parks this rusty old GMC van in front of my house, where nobody could park behind him. The mail lady pulls up, has to back up to go around him. Nobody can park in front of him because then they'll be in his driveway. I don't know how to deal with it. The plate on this vehicle expired in February of two thousand and nineteen. I keep calling the code officer on grass violations. I sent him a picture with my tape measure showing the grass was eleven inches tall on July eleventh. He didn't get back to me until I sent him another text saying, and this was on July twenty-second, I says, "Grass is still growing, Joe." He says, two days later, he sends me a text saying, I says, "It's still growing, waiting for the grass to be cut." He said he was offered an extension on his grass due to his workload. The guy goes to work at five forty-five in the morning and is home by two o'clock in the afternoon, and then I don't see him no more. He's in the house, probably video gaming. I pay seven thousand dollars a year in property taxes, and I get to live next to a slob, and I'm not getting no help from the village. Help me.
Well, I understand our police department's already been citing anything in violation of any of our ordinances, and I think our code enforcement has also been looking at it, too.
I get the guy's number. He's, you know, I can show you the texts. I can show you pictures. Not only that, where this guy's lot is positioned is right where the sanitary sewer and the fire protection runs parallel to each other through the cul-de-sacs. Well, right next to his garage, where his garbage cans are, there's a caving along his foundation, and it looks like to be about three feet deep. His garbage cans are falling in, all his paver bricks are falling in, and it's right in line with the route of the fire, or sprinkler line, you know, fire protection and sanitary. I'm wondering if there's a collapsed sewer or a collapsed water line. Why is this big gaping hole next to his foundation? I don't know what's going on, and he don't seem to care.
Well, I think we're all aware of the situation. Chief of Police has already been out, they've been out there?
This ordinance on parking commercial vehicles, is that van considered a commercial vehicle? Because when I brought this downstairs to complain about this Article seven, they says that there's nothing that they can do. That is, if this guy's not driving a vehicle, they can't ticket the vehicle? Now, if I called DuPage County, could they ticket the vehicle?
They can't. If the plates are expired, the village can do something. If the grass is tall, the village can do something. The village has an administrative adjudication system now, so we can more easily process violations. And I meet with the head of the building division regularly, and he goes through a lot of his problem cases. I'll make sure this is on next week's list to discuss with him, and I'm sure a citation will issue. Just remember, if a problem gets reported in July, village's first goal is compliance, not to drag someone into court. And if they don't comply within a month, unless it's an urgent matter, then citations get issued, and they have to appear typically the following month. So, there is, with any property, a little bit of time involved to get compliance, but the village will work towards compliance. And now we know the address, know your problems, it'll get looked into.
Well, I asked the woman that lives there, they got two young kids, you know, one's maybe three, four years old, the other one's two years old. And she'll back this van up now because evidently she's PO'd at me for calling it in, and I can't even cut my grass. Like I said, I can't have company come over. So I asked her one day, I had got up early, pulled my van up far enough, so when she backs her van up, she'll be at the end of her driveway, not in front of my house. So, that day, she's in the yard, and I seen her in the yard, and I said, "Excuse me, Janet, could you possibly do me a favor? Would you be able to park your van where it's located today, just to make it easier for the mail lady and visitors coming to my house?" She says, "Sure." The next day, she backed that van up, right again, right in the middle of the house, you know, I just-
I'm sure you could tell us a lot of different situations, but we've got a full agenda, and I've got a couple other individuals on open forum. So, thank you.
And John, the blocking of the sidewalk, that's also an ordinance violation, too, right?
Absolutely.
And that's handled immediately?
I'd overall like to see it crack down village-wide on that, because-
You cited that already at that address.
Okay, good, because it seems to be one of those abused ordinances.
Yes. The whole cul-de-sac, there's three families that own five vehicles, and everybody's always blocking. My grandkids come over, and I can't even walk around a cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next open forum request, Cara Q., eight forty, okay, eight forty Heath Lane.
Yes. Hello. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to someone, and I don't know him personally, so if he's in the room, Larry McIntyre. Hi, Larry. Wanted to publicly thank Larry. I reached out to, I think I reached out to everybody. I had a response from Mr. May, because I wasn't allowed to reach out to everybody on one email. And then Larry was able to advertise on the city's, or the village's electronic signs right here and then down by where I live, at the other fire station, the EPA meeting that was held two weeks ago. And as you can see, I'm wearing a Stop Sterogenics. I have a business card, so you have some additional information. So, thank you very much that you got that on the sign, and hopefully, a few people from our village were able to attend. I don't know if anybody here was able to attend, because I think you're all here at a meeting. Just so you're aware, we did have two state legislators there. Deanne Mizaki was in attendance. Jim Durkin was in attendance. Mayor Frank Trilla from Willowbrook was in attendance. Gary Grasso from Burr Ridge was there. I don't recall the people from Hinsdale, but there were people representing Hinsdale. There were people there that were willing to get up and speak, and they had gotten approval to actually have additional time. So they weren't limited to, you know, residential, like, two-minute period of time. Bottom line, I would like our village, the village that I have lived in for sixteen years, that I have sent my children to Marker District sixty, which is much closer to the offending polluter at the south end of Westmont. I would like the village of Westmont to get actively involved. I just saw on Facebook yesterday, the village of Oak Brook, which is to the north of us, has now signed a resolution. The four villages that are putting an amicus brief together for the county court, they are working together, Burr Ridge, Willowbrook, Darian, and Hinsdale. They are going to court, they're battling for our safety. And I would really like Westmont to become more educated and get more involved. If they are permitted to get a eighty-seven-foot stack added to the facility in Willowbrook, be sure that you will all be breathing in even more ETO. Because if you raise the stack to eighty-seven feet, it doesn't disappear, it just goes out farther, okay? So, if you have children, grandchildren, if you care about your own lungs, we all need to get into this fight, and we need to stop, hopefully ban ETA globally, but I know we have to start here locally, so please. And I would like to finish by saying Maya Angelou said, "I did then what I knew how to do. Now that I know better, I do better." We know ETO is a carcinogen, it's toxic, it damages your DNA. If you want to learn more about the environmental cost, if you're not familiar with it, please check out their website. I really encourage everyone, and everyone here, get involved. Something needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last meeting, we sent, we're sending letters of support to all the communities who-
Participate in the action, so I know you're not satisfied with it, but we do what we do and support Deanne Mizaki, who's got the office in town, too, and are using those resources to express our efforts.
And I didn't, this was at the bottom of my note here, but following and monitoring, and that's what District eighty-six is saying they're doing?
Following and monitoring, it's not enough, okay? We know more now. We know what this company is wanting to do, what it's been doing for thirty-five years. It's not enough. And if Oak Brook can get out there and do something, then this village, Westmont, needs to get out there and do more. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, well, I don't know what that resolution is or what it says, but it might just be a resolution saying the same thing.
But maybe it's telling their citizens, and maybe more people will get involved in the fight.
I'll find out what they did.
I want you to, yeah, I want you to look into that. I didn't get a chance to read the resolution, I just saw it yesterday that it was posted. So, I'm sure there is plenty of legal jargon that you need to worry about, but your response to me that as a municipality, you can't do much, there are many municipalities who are doing more. And I'm the only one that read that email from you, Mr. May, so I would like the greater community to know about it.
I wanted to comment on that, just for your information. The response, you can communicate with the whole village board through that email address, and that's what it's for, and in fact, not to speak for them, but they like that. So that is a useful tool. It's just they cannot interact with you as a group through that email chain.
Right, and you responded for-
That's why I do that.
Right, and that's fine.
Okay.
I understand that.
Very good.
But I wanted everyone up here to know why I was contacting you and contacting Larry McIntyre, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just add one quick point? I know you mentioned Representative Mizaki, but I just want you to know that personally, I sit next to your county board member, Greg Hart, on the DuPage County Stormwater Committee, and you probably know him because he's intimately involved with this issue. He knows he has my whole personal support. I'm not speaking for the board, but obviously you heard the village's letter, and that's really, I think, the most effective way that we can help, which is the way I chose to do it. So even though you don't see us out there with signs, I know Greg's fighting, it's in his district. Same thing with Mayor Trilla, we see him all the time, he has businesses in town, so they know that we're there supporting them, and I know that that's only worth its weight so much to you. But I do want you to know, it's top of mind for us. I mean, we all live here, our families live here, so don't think we're just pushing to the wayside. There's a lot of leaders that do cover that area, that we're all connected with, that are real close to it, and I know that they're doing the right thing.
There's another step now, too. Senator Curran has filed a new piece of legislation. It's Senate Bill twenty-two sixty-four, and I'd like to see us file a witness slip in support of that. I think Governor Pitsker has also talked about calling a special session just for that bill. And so that's going through the works right now. And that may be, because that bill's supposed to basically make the standard so high that it's almost impossible.
Which bill is that, sir?
The Attorney General and the others aren't going to be able to go past what the citizens want. So, I think all of us should think very seriously about doing that.
Tell me that number again, please.
It's Senate Bill two-two six-four.
Thank you.
And I'm reading the release that was there, and basically it says that Governor Pitsker has offered to call a special session to deal with this issue. He's committed not to let this place open, and if we could get, you know, if we can throw our support with witness slips behind this, that isn't going to hurt.
No.
So.
And for your information, too, so we're, as a community, and then on DuPage County, our council of government is the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference, and Trustee Addington sits on the Legislative Committee of that organization, too.
I'm very much involved with this.
Thank you very much.
So, good. I know the last meeting, we're all in support of, so-
I know you are all in support. I just feel like, as an individual who, you know, I shot, I mean, how many years I got a target, right next door, I had no idea it was there.
All right.
I'm sure many of you did as well.
Yeah, across the street from the mayor's office.
Yes.
Village Hall. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have another open forum request. It's from Mr. Irv Kaplan, the Rotary Club, I knew it was going to be Rotary, Rotary Club of Westmont.
Yeah, I'll handle that.
Yeah.
You should throw him this one away.
Yeah. On behalf of the Rotary Club of Westmont, I'd like to thank the trustees here, the board, and the administration for the opportunity to speak to you. Our Rotary Club has been here since nineteen seventy-seven, and I just want to mention that all the money we earn here is used to benefit the community and citizens of all ages in the community. I'm here to thank you for the opportunity to get a special grant. The application was made, which will help support a calendar that we are undertaking to print and distribute. The calendar will go to every citizen in the community. It'll also be passed out at the train station, and in the calendar, besides the dates that we normally have in the calendar, will be the, some of the businesses that are advertising, but most important, all the information a citizen needs to contact anyone for anything in the village will be in the calendar. So, I'm asking that we maybe get awarded this special grant, I think it's twenty-five-hundred hours. We're going to put up a lot more money for that, and I have to thank a lot of people in our club and a lot of business people that are in support of this. So, with that, I don't want to take up much more time, but I thank you, and we hope we get this special grant. It'll be considered a community grant, and I assure you, this will go back to the community. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I know that on tonight's agenda, you came at a good night. It's going to be voted on tonight.
Yeah.
It went through committee, so now tonight, the board will address it.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will close open forum and move on to reports, and I only have one item, and that's the Westmont Post Office dedication to James Robinson. It'll be on August the thirtieth at the post office, and I think we got a visual.
He's getting one.
The entire community is invited to join Representative Casson and the Westmont Post Office for their dedication ceremony to James Robinson, a former Westmont resident who made the ultimate sacrifice for his country in the Vietnam War and received the Congressional Medal of Honor. So I believe ten o'clock.
I think that's the time, yes.
I haven't set the exact time, but ten o'clock, it'll be, to get the post office to do anything is huge. And for them to name this after Mr. Robinson, I think, is, his grandfather was a former mayor in Westmont, so this is, this is quite an honor.
Couple of years before you.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we slide in, change in the mailing addresses while we're doing this?
Yeah, that's the next step.
Well, the right people will be there, so that'll be the, um-
Actually, my understanding from talking with some of the folks that are working on this is that it's extremely unusual for a post office to be dedicated like this, so I know there's a school that he had taught at before he went into service in Virginia that has his name on it today, and there's a couple of other things, so it's a time that the hometown community did something.
And we have to thank the American Legion was the driving force behind this. So their persistence came through, and the post office decided to do it. So, I'll move on to Clerk Simmsky.
I just want to remind everyone that we will be closed on Labor Day. I'm sure everybody already knows this, but I'm just reminding you, on Monday, September second, all our village offices are closed. And I want to congratulate our police department on their night out and the huge success it was, and the fire department on their cruising night. I mean, they had so much happening, the kids had so much fun, there were so many things they could do, they just, my grandkids just ran from one to the next, to the next, to the next. They just didn't get to use the dunk tank. Larkin wanted to get dunked somebody, so. But it'd gone down by the time she got there, too, to it, so. Anyway, thank you, guys. It was wonderful. Your cruising night was wonderful. So was the Public Works Department with their trucks. I was impressed with everybody's turnout for all of them, so, thank you.
I think we all were. Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be September twenty-sixth at four-thirty, right here in Village Hall. And then we have a big groundbreaking ceremony coming up, August twenty-fourth, eleven a.m. for the new Public Works facility, which will be at fifty-five East Burlington Avenue. Everybody is invited. It's the biggest public project this year in the county, so hopefully, everybody can make it out and watch us dig some, throw some shovels in the ground and get to work, right, Mike?
That's right. And then, I know Jenny just said it, but we had three great weeks of good family events. I mean, it was, it was a lot of fun. So it was, you know, you don't get to do that in every town, and thanks to all the staff that put it together, from Public Works, police, to fire. I mean, Jenny, you were right. I mean, it was all the staff working these kid games, and I mean, it was fun. You could tell, everybody was just having a blast, so. And it was nice to be able to dunk a couple of the staff that we had to put up with for a few years. But the last thing, Mayor, is I mentioned county stormwater. I did have a meeting, every month we have a meeting, but I just wanted to bring something, and thanks to Manager May for reminding me about it. There is Elmhurst Quarry Tours, Elmhurst Quarry Tours, September twenty-first. If you haven't done it, I'd recommend it. Steve and I both have. It's a pretty slick tour, and it's open to the public. They're doing, every thirty minutes, I think, is bus tours. You get to go down in there and check out the facility, and kind of see the pump station on the other side of eighty-three, and it's an awesome regional stormwater, I guess, feature that the county has.
Assuming we don't have a hundred-year storm that day.
Yeah, they'll probably close it, but if you haven't seen it, I highly recommend it, and we can share the information. But it's September twenty-first, I believe it starts in the morning, I'm not too sure, I'll find out, but it's a good thing to go do. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Trustee Little?
Thanks, Mayor. The next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held September the twelfth at four-thirty, right here in Village Hall, and everyone's invited. It's an open meeting and kind of fun sometimes. Second item is the Second Annual Ride Away From the Darkness Motorcycle Ride from, it's coming up this Saturday. It's hosted by resident Chris Vitek. All proceeds go to suicide prevention. You can sign up through the press release on the village website. It's a nice ride. It leaves Harley-Davidson in Lyle, and it ends up at one of our well-known Walshes here in town, so come out for that one. Also, the Ty Warner Craft Beer Fest, September the seventh, from two to six-thirty p.m. It will benefit the People's Resource Center, as well as the Hinsdale Wellness House. It's always a good time. The Pet Promenade has been rescheduled. The date now is set for September twenty-second. It's a Sunday from a, no, take that back, it's a, yes, it is a Sunday. It's from eleven a.m. to two p.m. out at Ty Warner Park. And those that were supposed to be out there back in May, this has been rescheduled, and everybody's looking forward to this one, so come on out for that one. Cruising nights, we only have after tonight, there's only two left. Can't believe where the summer go. Every Thursday night from five to nine until the end of August, so you're going to make it to one of them. You've only got a few left, don't forget to come out. There is a .5K event for Ronald McDonald House, August twenty-fourth. It's a Saturday. Resident Anisha Galrick is organizing it, and the proceeds go to Ronald McDonald House charities. It's always a really important opportunity there. Holy Trinity has a parish fest from September, or I'm sorry, August the second, I'm sorry, August thirtieth to September second. It's a carnival, craft show, and bingo. So, down at Holy Trinity, everybody's invited to that one. And then last but not least, the Lions Club Oktoberfest is running for the cause. It's a 5K, and there'll be music and food, and that's October the fifth.
Right here.
Right here, right downtown.
At the commuter parking lot.
Right out in front of, right out in front, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Westmont First will meet Monday, August nineteenth, at six p.m. at the library, and we are also promoting our Community Arts Initiative again, and there's one more opportunity to bring artists into town on August twenty-ninth during the street fair. It'll be in the old Artist Block place, they allow us to use that space. Last event brought out ten artisans, and there were some art sales happening at that particular venue, so this is a nice opportunity to showcase more artists here in town and bring them to our community. And then, lastly, Environmental Improvement Committee will meet on, now that date's wrong, it's not August fifth, because that's over. September ninth. And then, we are also participating on August twenty-ninth for the cruising nights event there, and they're going to talk more about developments at Richmond Gardens and some other things. On the screen there, you can see a wonderful rain barrel, and then the other rain barrel on the other slide, that one was actually sent to us by a Westmont resident who took the time to decorate up one of her, I don't know if it's one of hers, but her rain barrel. Her name is Gail Lupia, and she sent that in so that we could see it. So we've got rain barrel painting going on all over the place, and it's kind of a nice thing.
It is.
And, you know, I mentioned, I think, a while back, that Westmont leads into Page County for rain barrels, so that's a nice honor to have, so. All right, that's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'll move over this side to Trustee Addington.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing is, let's talk about School District two-oh-one goes back into session next Wednesday for Miller and Manning and the junior high and the high school. So, just remember that for that school system, our kids are back in school, they'll be walking in the mornings or riding their bikes as long as the weather permits, or walking to school, or getting taken by their parents, so let's be careful and remember, our kids, unfortunately, because of all the construction with the referendum in Marker School System, they're not opening until, their school is not opening until September the ninth. And so, those kids will still be out and about, but, so it's going to be a strange year. I think right now, the end of school year is going to be right around Memorial Day for two-oh-one, and I think something like the eleventh- 201, and I think something like the 11th of September, or 12th of September for Marker, or June, I mean, yeah.
Is Marker 60, the whole district doing that, or just Westview Hills?
No, it's Westview Hills, Holmes, and Marker School.
Thank you.
So, the, but for now, let's remember that school is going to be back in for, for 55th Street North, so our kids will be biking to school early in the morning, and, you know, I think school starts here in 201 at 8 o'clock in the morning, and they're off, they're out at 2:45, so watch our kids. And I'll let you all know with the other. The next thing is, who is responsible for the, the new detention ponds we put in on Warwick Street?
They're village-owned, for now, we have that agreement with the Park District that at some point, these will all be conveyed to the Park District, but it's, it's a naturalized planning, so it's a zero maintenance, other than the parkways we're supposed to.
So we're going to let it look as well as it looks?
The basins themselves, but the parkways should not look like that, we should be moving it. And then...
It just looks a little like it's being unkept.
I've heard that comment.
Okay. And then the third thing is, again, going back to Cruising Nights, and I mentioned this the last meeting, next Thursday, the 22nd, the Lions Club will have both the Diabetic Retinopathy Bus, which is a bus that will, has a camera, a special camera, that takes pictures of the retinas in your eyes, and will determine if, if an ophthalmologist sees, when they look at those pictures, if they see any problems, especially kind of headed towards diabetes. And then we also will have the Hearing Screening Bus, and for those wives who want to bring their husbands to find out if they have selective hearing loss. And they'll be here from 4 until 8, and a picture of the bus is there, and that's sponsored by the Lions Club. So those three things are, are coming up, and that's it. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Previously, before this meeting, we had our Public Safety Committee meeting. There were quite a few items on the agenda, we're just going to touch up on, touch on a couple of things. First off, we are going to be forming a special committee group to do some research, planning, design, and possibly going and looking at the options of going with the full-time fire department. As we move forward in this process, I will be sure to make sure that everybody is aware of what is going on. I want to thank the mayor, the manager, and the chief for helping get this going. The police department, we discussed numerous things, department personnel and staffing, DUI attorney proposals, the DEA Task Force. I want to stay on the police department right now, because I wanted to congratulate them on their National Night Out and their open house, it was wonderful, and I want to have the chief touch up on, touch on a few more things.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Guzzo. We have our Annual Citizens Police Academy, oh, this is a shot of the National Night Out, so there was a lot of very good attendance, we had lots of local vendors passing out all sorts of things, and face painting, and we had our radar, the little remote control car, we had tours, we had hot dogs provided by the Lions Club. It was a great night for everyone.
Over 400.
Yeah, over 400 hot dogs, there was a lot of hot dogs that went out. So thank you for, for that came out. Apologies for the parking issue.
Thank you.
It was a little congested up there, but everybody made their way either on foot, on bike, or, you know, parking in a detention area, I don't know where they were parking bike. I also want to test base on the Citizens Police Academy, which starts on September 25th. We're still taking applications online on the Village website, we should be one of the scrolling banners at the top right corner. The class is already over halfway full, so get in as fast as you can. We have 18 people already registered, we'll take about 30, and that starts September 25th. It's a really good program, and always get really good feedback on that. And next is this weekend, actually starting tomorrow, at King Car Wash, at 6255 South Cass, they will be collecting donations from customers, as well as matching whatever donations are, are received. That will all go toward Illinois Special Olympics, we're on a great pace, we've already exceeded our goal from last year, actually, last year's total, we've, we've eclipsed, and we're, we're pushing toward $20,000 now. So hopefully we'll get that by the end of the year. And finally, we have our annual Stuff a Squad fundraiser, going August 17th through the 24th, at Mariano's on 63rd Street, which will benefit the People's Resource Center 100%, so if you can throw some food in the squad car, we will make sure it gets to the right place and, and help out the right people, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, now moving on to the Fire Department, I am going to invite Chief Riley up to talk about a few items that we discussed at the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Just wanted to remind everybody, the 9/11 ceremony is coming up, September 11th, Wednesday night, at Fire Police Facility located at 500 North Cass. It's about a half-hour service, come out and honor the fallen. Next one I'd like to talk about is Fire Truck Night. We had a great turnout last week, a huge crowd, a lot of things for the kids to play games, the bounce house, the dunk tank was a huge hit, thanks to the department head staff, Bruce Sylvester, Chief Gunther, Noriel Noriega from Public Works, to be in the dunk tank. We found some, Village Staff has some great arms and loves to dunk some department heads. The parade was fantastic, the weather, I couldn't beat it, so again, thank you to everybody that came out. And then last, Trustee Guzzo, I had the honor tonight to give a Citizens Life Award certification to a nine-year-old girl that lives here in Westmont by the name of Rachel Houdick. She was at a camp on June 28th at a local business in town, and one of her friends was choking, and she was in the bathroom underneath the stall, climbed underneath the stall to perform the Heimlich maneuver on this other little girl. So for a nine-year-old girl to have that kind of enthusiasm and instinct to jump in to save another child's life, her friend, is absolutely outstanding. It was certainly great to have their family here tonight, and her grandfather was a past Downers Grove Fire Department member, along with the Naperville Fire Department, so it was a great honor to produce and provide her with that certificate tonight. Thank you.
And did you want to talk about the Service Award?
Sure, I had a Service Award for Captain Arnold Nolan, a 25-year member of the department. Arnold's very involved in the department, a great asset, he is one of the members who gets a lot of items for us for, at no cost, from the Department of Defense website, so he does a phenomenal job with that, trying to continue to keep the cost savings down of the village. He comes to me and asks me for certain items that I approve, and has to go through a process through the manager and the mayor to get that approval, so, you know, Captain Nolan's been here 25 years, he's been in the fire service for 30, he started with me in Downers Grove in 1987, so, you know, great service award for him, too.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo.
The only other thing I would like to say is our next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be November 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Irv Kaplan kind of took a little bit of my luster here, but we have the, the Westmont Rotary is creating our new annual community calendar. We used to have this, the village used to send it out, and it was, it seems like it's missed throughout the village, so we're, we're trying to bring it back, and the, the benefit is going to be, the sponsorship money is going to go to our local scholarships, and also to Helping Hands Program, which is a 201 program that we work with the social workers to help out needy children, whether it be backpacks, you know, field trips, different things that maybe that their family can't fund, the social worker can then give 100% of those funds to that program. And personally, one of my favorites that the Rotary Club does, and I think we'll hear more about it later, and there is sponsorship opportunities, if, if anyone has interest, contact the Rotary Club. Moving on to the Economic Development Committee, our next meeting will be September 4th at 9 a.m. at the Village Hall. I did want to mention, we, we lost a retiring member, Nancy Martins, former Chamber Director, former Village Trustee, has, has retired from the committee. Just wonderful input she's had over the years, and just a wonderful overall person, so she'll be missed, but we want to really thank her for, for her service in all the years that she's put in. And exciting news, we have the groundbreaking ceremony for Quincy Station, and this is going to be the new project at Cass and Quincy. The groundbreaking is going to be August 29th at 4:30 p.m. The weather is guaranteed to be good, so we encourage everyone to come out and, and participate in the groundbreaking. Also, Mr. Mayor, if, you just commented on the James Robinson, if, if anyone gets an opportunity to read the article in the Westmont Magazine, I think it was very well put together, it was well-written, and really give you appreciation of, of what James Robinson has gone through to, to serve our country. On serving our country, I'd like to take time to thank the police department. You know, the things I see in the news today, dumping water buckets, you know, police officers getting ridiculed, things like that, just, it just blows my mind, and I really want to thank you and, and the professionalism of, of our department that I see on an everyday basis. So I know all of us, when I speak for all of us, when I say we really appreciate what you guys are doing here in town. And then, lastly, to the Environmental Improvement Commission, Bruce, I know you're commissioning and Marie, and I know Linda, a lot of you have been active on the monarch butterflies, but I've noticed more monarch butterflies this summer than I ever have in my history, I think, so, you know, hats off to everyone who's, who's been working at it. I know I've seen some things on social media where, where other residents are participating and getting that going, so, good to see. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's what I have.
Thank you. Moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. I would ask one item be removed, and that's a payroll proclamation. So we'll remove that, and we'll address that separately, and I'd ask Manager May to please read.
That's the point to make clear, we're still going to do it, we're just going to do it individually.
Yes. We almost...
All right.
Don't hurt it.
On the consent agenda this evening, first, we have Village Board Minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held August 1st, 2019. Next is Finance Ordinance Number 7, and the aggregate amount of $1,520,613.73. We have purchase orders, first purchase order is Westmont Chamber of Commerce, $41,750 for tourism work for the fiscal year ending 2020. Next is Engineering Solutions Team, $79,796. This is the purchase order for the Engineering Services Agreement that you already approved for the Parkway Avenue Reconstruction Project. Next is Compass Minerals America Incorporated, $106,188, that's an annual amount for road salt, for snow and ice control. Next is Sutton Ford, $76,695.56 is a dump truck replacement. Next is DuPage Convention Visitors Bureau, $39,191, represents the annual membership. The last purchase order is for E. Anthony, which is $29,465, represents the, the Village Hall security barrier downstairs. This is a purchase order on the consent agenda, but it's just an encumbering purchase order, you're going to hear about the contract later on the agenda. Total of purchase orders is $373,085.56, brings the total of the purchase orders with Finance Ordinance Number 7 to $1,893,699.29. We have, the proclamation was removed, Hotel Motel Grant requests, the, there are Hotel Motel Grant requests on the agenda, and there's also some under new business. First, the recurring ones, first one is Westmont Park District for Holidays, board to consider a motion awarding a Hotel Motel Grant in the amount of $5,000 to the Westmont Park District to assist in the Holidays celebration. Next, grant request, also Park District for Haunted Forest, board to consider a motion awarding Hotel Motel Grant, Park District. Hotel Motel Grant in the amount of $2,500 to the Westmont Park District for the haunted forest activity. Third and last on the consent agenda is a request from the Park District for Concerts in the Park, board to consider a motion awarding Hotel Motel Grant in the amount of $2,500 to the Westmont Park District for Concerts in the Park events. That concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Motion by Little.
Motion made in second to approve, as read, any comments, questions, anybody? Seeing none, I ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. Motion passes. I turn to our financial director to talk about this payroll proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have some representatives from our local chapter of the American Payroll Association that are here to receive this proclamation, and I think we will go through, we'll kind of talk about it, I'll read the proclamation out, and then we'll record the votes, and then we can present them with a certificate of the proclamation, and then invite them to say a few words at that point. So I will add, before I get on to the proclamation itself, I want to say that the American Payroll Association has been a good resource to us at the village, has been able to provide us with the information that we need to make sure we stay in compliance with federal and state guidelines, and been able to help us, make sure we do things the appropriate way. So we appreciate the American Payroll Association in general, and our local chapters, and I think everybody knows the importance of payroll, and I think it's important that we recognize people that are able to, to work, and for all the work that is done throughout the country in that regard. So without further ado, let me jump on to the proclamation itself, and it says, "Whereas the American Payroll Association and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the more than 150 million people who work in the United States, and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting worker earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. And whereas payroll professionals in the Village of Westmont play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Westmont, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholdings, reporting and depositing, and whereas payroll departments collectively spend more than $2.4 trillion annually complying with myriad federal and state wage and tax laws, and whereas payroll professionals play an increasingly important role ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents, making sure they comply with their child support mandates, and whereas payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding systems, and whereas payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving compliance with government procedures, and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses, and whereas the week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed National Payroll Week to give additional support to the efforts of the people who work in Westmont, Illinois, and of the payroll profession. Therefore, be it resolved, Ronald J. Gunther, by virtue of the authority vested in him as mayor of the Village of Westmont, does hereby proclaim the first full week of September as Payroll Week for the Village of Westmont, Illinois."
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve, as read, any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ladies, if you'd like to come up, we're going to finalize the vote on the proclamation and present it to you.
Thank you. Can't believe it's been a year already. They move by really fast. I'm Katie Staffelt, I'm the president of the Chicago chapter. With me, I have Jerry Gradel, our education director. We just, at first, I want to thank you guys for your continued support of the payroll profession, not only in Westmont, but the Chicago chapter, and all of our members, and all across the United States, it's just, it means a whole lot to all of us. Just a few things that we do as a chapter, well, what, actually, first of all, what, what this means, the proclamation, we were able to send one of our members to the National Payroll Conference in Long Beach this year because of proclamations like this, and that the continuing education is just, it's amazing. And the next big hurdle all payroll professionals are going to have, including you, across the country, is the new W-4 for 2020. It is going to be a nightmare, and APA will be the ones to help you, guide you through that. So again, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, it truly means a lot to me.
Jerry? The only thing I can say is, no one wants to do this for free, okay? You may volunteer your time, you may do all kinds of things, but the reason most of us show up every day is because we need a paycheck. There is no easy button for payroll, but it is the support of you and everyone else behind the scenes, making it happen, and making sure that no one, no, no employee, no business gets one of those nasty letters from a government agency saying that they did not do what they were supposed to do. Know that we are all... Know that we are all in support of every business out there. If ever somebody needs assistance on a more local level, they can always contact the Chicago chapter, as well as the National American Payroll Association. Thank you.
If anybody's interested, we have a payroll conference next week.
Yes.
In Naperville. Close to home.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to new business. A, hotel motel grant request from the Park District for the Summer Musical. Board to consider a motion awarding a hotel motel grant in the amount of $2,500 to the Westmont Park District for the performance of the Summer Musical. Director Parker.
This is an item that was discussed in more detail at the last administration finance committee, where the committee unanimously recommended approval of the grant. This is for the Park District and their Summer Musical, which, as you can see and as you're aware, performs a number of shows which draw people to our community, which is the reason that we use the hotel motel grant, that's the reason we have the grant, to be able to draw people to our community, and I think the Summer Musical is a great example of that.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Nero.
Little?
Motion made in second. Any comments?
I have one thing to add. This is a reoccurring event. It could have been on the consent agenda, and the first draft of the consent agenda it was, and then I pulled it off thinking it was a, a new event. So there's no other purpose for it being down under new business.
Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Newrow?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
New business B, another hotel motel grant request from our Rotary Club for their calendar. Board to consider a motion awarding a hotel motel grant in, in the amount of $2,500 to the Westmont Rotary Club for the community event calendar. And I'd ask Director Parker to comment.
This was also discussed in detail at the administration finance committee meeting, and you've also heard about it this evening from both Irv Kaplan and Trustee Barry. This is a calendar that will be promoting many different community events. So as you're aware, we do grants to some specific community events. We've talked about several of them tonight. This calendar is something that's going to be promoting many events all at once to residents and also residents of other communities. As they talked about, they're distributing at the train station, hotels, and places to be able to attract people to come to visit Westmont, which again is the purpose of the hotel motel grant.
And it's being mailed to the, to the residents free of charge?
Yes. Another benefit is that it will go to the residents free of charge.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo? Second, Little?
Motion made in second to approve. Comments? Trustee Barry?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just be abstaining from voting as a, as a sitting board member on the Rotary Club, so I just wanted to...
Recusing.
Recuse myself.
I have a question for Director Parker. Our annual appropriation for hotel motel grants, where are we at at this point?
So we will, with the approval of this grant, as well as the others that are on the agenda, we'll, we'll have approved right around $10,000 of our $25,000.
And last year, we had some funds left over?
Yes.
Okay. So, any other comments?
Just let me make a comment. Is it possible to do this with electronic version as well?
I believe that that is, that is one of the aspects that's going to happen.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Glenn could probably confirm that, but I believe that is, that is part of the program.
Seeing no other comments, I'd ask for a roll call.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Newrow?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Recuse.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code Parkway Reconstruction Project. Board to consider an Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution for the village's Parkway Reconstruction Project, number 190011100FP. And I'd ask Director Ramsey to give us some more information.
Thank you, Mayor. We're requesting to appropriate the sum of $79,796 for the Phase II Design Engineering for Parkway Reconstruction Project from the village's allotment of the MFT funds. You saw earlier, this was one of the items that was under the purchase orders. Staff does recommend the approval of this resolution for that amount.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little?
On the question, manager may.
I just wanted to add, you've already approved the engineering services agreement. This resolution is strictly for allotting motor fuel tax to pay for that.
Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Newrow?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, engineering agreement Lincoln and Irving Parking Lot Project. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Thomas Engineering Group for Phase I and Phase II Design Engineering Services for the proposed parking lot project at Lincoln and Irving Streets. Director Ramsey?
Thank you, Mayor. We're requesting an approval of a sum of $79,938 for Phase I and Phase II Design Engineering Services for the proposed parking lot project located at the southeast corner of Lincoln and Irving Streets. The parking lot shall include underground stormwater management, landscape improvements, and other related work. The staff is recommending the approval of the proposal and that amount for the Phase I and Phase II Design Services.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented. Barry?
Second, Little.
Addington, second. Comments, question? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Newrow?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, security door at Village Hall. Board to consider ordinance to approve a contract from E. Anthony Incorporated to furnish and install a security door at Village Hall. Manager may.
This is what I was starting to describe about with the purchase orders, but we've also talked about it in finance committee, so the, the hallway that leads into the, into the Village Hall downstairs, once you get past the clerk's office and community development, we've recently modified community development so that the window is accessible from the hallway, that they don't need to go into those offices anymore, and the last phase or last step is the, the barrier that would be across the hallway to, not to prevent people from going through, but unattended or unacknowledged. So if there's an appointment, there's no visitors in the finance department down there, and if someone was coming upstairs during the day, they would check in with the clerk's office or the business office before being let up here. So I mean, it is a security door, but it's for those purposes. On a meeting night, any public meeting up in this room, they're designed to be left, you know, wide open so that you can let yourself upstairs, you know, so that there's no monitor downstairs as far as, you know, letting people in, so...
Do they have a buzzer? It can...
A buzzer and a fob, and there's, there's different ways to release that. And it's also all ADA, so it'll have the automatic ability to push them open as well.
Shouldn't it be monitored during the meetings?
It's monitored, you know, by police remotely and things like that, but it, back when, you know, we had the custodian that was on staff, he sat downstairs, but there's nobody that, what I meant by that, there's nobody sitting by the front door, you know, watching.
Do I have a motion to approve?
You didn't want anybody to know that, is that what it was?
So move, Guzzo.
Second, Nero.
Check for paint downstairs.
Motion made to approve. Trustee Addington?
Yeah, do we really need to do this? I, I mean, I know we're not talking about a lot of money here, it's an unbudgeted item. And all the offices have, are locked. I mean, you don't get into the finance department or any other offices, I think, down there, although the stairwell is open, isn't it?
Yeah.
So they could probably wander anywhere? I mean, otherwise, we have to lock every door.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I think it's a waste of money, but that's all right.
There have been some recent issues or least concerns of a security nature that prompted this to get pushed on the front burner.
Yes.
Related to that, the, the board passed an ordinance last year which acknowledged the competitive bidding requirements of Illinois law, but said when you're just doing a renovation to an existing village building, you can waive the competitive bidding requirement by a two-thirds vote of the trustees, and that's authorized also by state statute for, for any reason. So in this case, we're using the contractor who built Village Hall, who's uniquely qualified to do the work, and there's a request to waive competitive bidding.
Well, and I, I guess with everything else that's going on, we probably need to do it.
Yes. Any other comments?
It doesn't make sense to have it locked during, somehow to monitor that during the board meetings.
The, the monitoring is like...
To put security doors in and then just open them up for the board meetings, doesn't make a lot of sense, but...
But then people couldn't get up here.
They have to have free access.
They meant to have somebody there during board meetings, so they monitor who comes in.
Got a police officer sitting in the back.
Well, at one time, we did that.
He's ready.
Yeah, I remember that.
But that's a good point. We'll...
We have first responders.
Any other comments?
John used to do it, right?
Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Newrow?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Did you doze off over there?
New, yeah. New business F, declare items as surplus equipment. Board to consider ordinance to declare miscellaneous fire department items as surplus property. Chief Ryle?
Oh, nope. Where'd he go?
He's back there. He's delegating.
The property, as defined in the attachment, has outlived its useful life and is outdated, non-functioning, or is otherwise not economically maintainable. The equipment will be sold, donated, or scrapped as appropriate. This property, upon being declared surplus and disposed of, will be removed from the village's property inventory. Any questions on the list provided?
This is done for a lot of our equipment for police, fire, Village Hall. So do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Barry.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Newrow?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anybody got any miscellaneous? Trustee Addington?
Yeah, probably something I should have brought up when we were talking about the schools opening, but I guess I'll direct this at chief. Will we be going back into the schools now that they're back in the session to talk again about somebody trying to get through the doors? I know they've done a lot of work over this last year or so in really securing up the entrances at all the schools in town. And I think with the new construction at Merker, they're doing the same thing.
Sure. We, we go through all the schools on an annual basis. School Resource Officer Detective Nick Len, who's also our SWAT team training coordinator, handles all of that, along with school district staffs for both 201 and Merker School District.
You'll be going back in again?
Oh, yeah. Every time.
Thank you very much.
Any other items? Seeing none, I need to call an executive session. Any motion to adjourn the executive session for, to review our closed session minutes pursuant to Section 2C-21 of the Open Meetings Act?
And the, and the other one, too.
And the purchase of real property for the use of the village pursuant to Section 2C-5 of the Open Meetings Act.[1699.12]